Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly
Okay, good morning. Good morning, Exeter. Good morning to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff, those in attendance, and I'm sure there are folks at home watching. Welcome to the special Select Board Meeting of December 28, 2023. I'd first like to start by introducing the board. To my right, Selectman Dan Chartran, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
To my left, our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman.
Good morning, everyone.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Rustine, good morning.
Good morning.
And then handling the Zoom offline is our Assistant Town Manager, Melissa Roy. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Nico Papakostandis. Unfortunately, our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, is out of town on vacation. But we do have a quorum of the board, so we will move forward. We have two things on the agenda this morning, the first of which is the Third Public Hearing, which I think is what everybody here is for.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Selectman Chartran?
I will be recusing myself on this matter again.
Okay, thank you. And that leaves three of us, which still leaves us with a quorum, so we will move forward. At this time, I would entertain a motion to open the Third Public Hearing under RSA 41-14A for the proposed acquisition of 23 Water Street, MAP 72, Lot 39, from Pearpoint LLC, owners Elliot Berkowitz and Nancy Phillips, for the purposes of retaining this property as a public park.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes 3-0, the public hearing is open. Before we hear from the public, and anybody and everybody that wishes to speak this morning will have that opportunity, I just kind of want to run through where we've been over the last several weeks. On or around December 4th or 5th, I was formally notified by the Town Manager that Elliot Berkowitz and Nancy Phillips had proposed this donation, and in order to fit in all of the holidays and follow the RSA, we had to schedule three public hearings, of course, but two of them needed to be done by special meeting just because of the calendar. Before that could be done, though, we needed to get the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, the Heritage Commission, and the Historic District Commission all to hear this proposal and to vote to recommend it to the Select Board. And that was put together in about 24 hours, and I think it's a testament to the commitment and the dedication of our volunteers, who always put the town of Exeter ahead of everything else, and within 24 hours, we had a quorum of all four of those boards and commissions who met here on December 7th, the evening of December 7th, and indeed, all four voted to recommend this to the Select Board. First public hearing was held the next morning in this room, December 8th, at 8:00 a.m. The second public hearing was held on December 18th as part of the Town of Exeter Regular Select Board Meeting, and then here we are for our third public hearing under the RSA, after which the Board will take a vote. Within the last couple of weeks, obviously, this was put together very, very quickly. The Board had a lot of questions, wanted to do their due diligence. Make the analogy of when you can buy a house, have to investigate, look at everything. We've done the best we can to look at the property, to look at the easements. Our counsel has looked at everything. Mr. Dean, I think we'd left you with some questions from the last meeting, so I'd like to turn it over to you for you to come up with and inform the Board what you've come up with over the last week.
Sure, so there's a memo in the packet that talks about there were a few questions that were raised at the last meeting on December 18th, and one of those questions was, what can we anticipate in lost property value if the property is not developed? What is the cost to construct a park green space, and what is the cost to maintain the site as a park green space? And in the memo, and I won't go into all the particulars, but basically, the memo lays out some of the different options that were presented as far as what the cost might be for each of the maintenance of the park, and then the construction of a new park.
Can I interrupt? Just, we have a packed room, and we also have some folks on Zoom. Could you go through some of the particulars?
Sure. So to address the property value question, we looked at various adjacent properties in the vision system. We reviewed those, 1 through 9 Water Street was one, 11 Water Street was another, and 2731 Water Street was another. We looked at that, and then we looked at 23 Water Street as a vacant lot, and it's currently assessed at $237,600. So when we looked at the 23 Water Street property, we looked at it in terms of if it was developed with building and land valued at $2 million. The taxes generated on the property given at the current tax rate of $26.78 would be $53,560 annually. And I made the point in the memo that Pearpoint's estimates for property investment, including land, totaled $2,174,563 in the RSA 79E application submitted April 9, 2020, and presented to the Board on May 4, 2020. And it should be noted in the original 79E application, seven years of property tax relief was granted to the property, and therefore, any tax revenues would be realized from new construction after seven years have passed from the construction completion date. And so I also noted that donation of the site as a park to the town would extinguish the 79E tax relief for the site.
Okay.
So that was the property value question. Now, the cost to construct the park is a little bit more complicated. The cost to construct the green space can be anywhere from simply putting a fence around the property with a gate for approximately $15,000, to constructing a very attractive flat space with high-quality amenities. Jen Martel, a member of our Planning Board and a landscape architect, developed a cost estimate for a park of $353,890, including survey and design, site improvements, temporary conditions, and including a contingency. And I noted that these are very ballpark numbers, but give a representation what a full park development may look like.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So at this time, I'd like to open the hearing to the public. Again, anybody and everybody that wishes to speak, you'll have an opportunity this morning. If you would, when you step to the microphone, please give us your name and your address for the record, and so I will now open it up to the public. Yes, sir.
I just want to ask a quick question, which is
Could I just have your name and address?
Jim Culp, 7 Dewey.
Thank you.
Street. I sent in some comments yesterday.
Yep.
And you acknowledged them, so has everybody seen those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I guess I maybe were outnumbered here a bit, but it strikes me that this is an overly pressured decision that actually involves a lot of money for taxpayers going forward, and that it strikes me that the town and the taxpayers ought to have a bigger say with the acknowledgement of the forgone tax revenue in the future. At the previous Select Board Meeting, the Fort Rock, Town Forest, Dexeter, Newfields thing, I thought was an amazingly good presentation of detailed financial impacts on the town, and also a great proposal for two different votes, one to get a sense of the town, and another one to actually acknowledge the money. And so, as the email that I sent in, it seems to me that this vote really shouldn't take place, which I guess is a temporary setback for the project, but until a greater process that is more transparent and more open, like other large expenditures, because just accepting a gift is not just accepting a gift. It has financial impact for everybody. All that said, it's, you know, there's nothing wrong with parks. We all like parks, and in particular, we're right across the river, even on the other side, on the library side is a great place that we've enjoyed. But this just doesn't seem like a good process for accepting the financial burden that could potentially be imposed on the town for accepting this.
Thank you very much. And I would like to add, we did receive, we being the Select Board, received voluminous amount of emails after this packet was put together. I've tried to respond to each and every of the emails. I think I got all of them, and if I missed anybody, I apologize, but all of those emails will be included in our next regular Select Board packet. But the Board did see all of your correspondence, and we appreciate people writing in to us. I'd just like to just comment briefly on the good points that you made, sir. The difference here is that, and there's two steps. The Select Board, and Mr. Dean, you jump in if I misspeak here, but the Select Board has the authority to accept a donation. The Select Board has the authority to accept a piece of property like this that's being donated. But any major expenditures in the future, whether it be on this property or any other property, would still require it to go on the warrant. So in other words, if we were to accept this donation, any expenditures moving forward would still have to go on the warrant for the voters to approve the spending of the money. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Great. Anybody else? Good morning.
Good morning. I've only had one cup of coffee this morning, and I wasn't really prepared to talk, but I was hoping other people would get up here. Laura Bricker, Coach Road. For those who don't know, this is also the murder scene in my latest book. And the reason I chose this lot as the murder scene is because it has been an eyesore to our downtown for decades, and I was kind of poking fun at that. I poked fun at what would happen if a developer came along and decided to put something there, and I thought, what would Exeter hate the most? How about a revolutionary-themed arcade and funhouse with big neon letters? And I say that just because I think we all need to kind of, I know this process has been feeling a little rushed to people, but how many years have we all looked at that lot and complained about it when we walked downtown? And here we have an opportunity to do something about that, and I recognize that people have questions. I've heard that there have been a lot of offers of donations from different landscape companies, people in the community. I think we could really do this at a pretty low cost to taxpayers, based on what I've seen. And the other thing I'd like to point out is, I think we need to look at the source of this donation. This is not coming from people that we are not familiar with in this town. Nancy and Elliot have done more to improve the downtown, I think, than anyone else I know. If you look at any of the other properties they own, they do a good job with them, they take their time, they are deliberate because they care about Exeter. And I would just ask you to consider that, this is just a donation at this point, we're not expending funds, and this could make a huge difference. I mean, I'm glad to kill someone off on that lot again, but I would rather see it turned into a park and not on my murder tour of Exeter when I'm out there walking people through who come to visit our beautiful downtown, so thank you.
Sally Ward, 72 Park Street. I'm not writing a novel, but I can't wait to read yours. When I first heard about this proposal, I was very excited because I thought it was a great opportunity for the town. And I understand the process has been unusual and sped up relative to other things, but I think that the process has been transparent, and I think that all due diligence has been done. You've done, I think, a good job. You've done what you need to do in terms of understanding what the lost cost, lost opportunity would be, but also what we have to gain. And I also am very impressed by those who have volunteered various goods and services to make this happen, and it doesn't have to happen all at once. And yet again, it shows the spirit of volunteerism and dedication to the town. We do have a vibrant downtown. I love our shops. I did all my Christmas shopping downtown, except for one or two things online. But I also think that if you look at downtown, it would be a beautiful addition to have a public space where people could sit in between their visits to the shops, grab a sandwich, and have a waterfront view right downtown. And I agree with Laura that it's been, that particular lot has been an eyesore. I don't quite remember when the fire happened, it was so long ago, but since then, nothing has happened, and it's been an ugly part of downtown. And one final thing, I had some imagining of what it would look like when I saw Exeter TV's video about the construction at the Ioka, and there were these views from the air of what that space looks like, and I could just imagine a lovely park being in addition to that lovely view. So I'm very much in favor of it, and I appreciate the due diligence that you've done.
Thank you. Don't fight, you can both speak. We've got all morning.
I mean, Flockhart, 7 Jack's Court. I think we all share some of the feeling about that space, and it's been sort of the bad, ugly, missing tooth on Water Street. And knowing what this town does to protect and preserve the green spaces, and how hard we're working to improve the green spaces in town, here's this fabulous opportunity, not only to improve a green space, create a green space, improve a space, but provide a welcome, not only for able-bodied folks in town, but to look at how we make something ADA accessible for anybody. And living near Park Street Common, when some of the padding went down for the playground, and to see some of the families that I've known with my children, my grandchildren growing up, knowing that they've got some very challenged kids who now come to that playground and can, their parents can get their strollers and wheelchairs in, that we could create an even better welcome right in town, and that we look and say, you know, not everybody's able to drive around the far side of Swayze or walk that far, but folks who want to walk from the mill or from those apartments and can come and say, you know, I'm a little tired, I'd like to sit down, and I would love to look across at the river. And I don't know about you, in the last year or two, to have seen the changes in the wildlife that we're seeing on the river, and to be able to have time to sit there with a cup of coffee or a sandwich and say, there's that eagle again. But I think the beauty of it is the fact that we value, as a town, a beautiful space, and we have many beautiful spaces. We value, as a town, that, because what does it do for us? You know, having all of us lived through COVID, we recognize how important that was when we couldn't go to a lot of places, but we could go outside, we could sit outside, we could walk around. So I think the gift, and the timing may be tricky, that, you know, but nobody said, here's a gift, and you don't turn around and say, couldn't you have given that to me a couple of months ago? Nobody says that. They say, thank you very much, that's wonderful. But I think there's a way to say thank you very much, to respect the taxpayers, to not throw any surprises at anybody, and to say, this is what this town means, this is why we did this, and this is how we want to welcome you. And, you know, you hear folks say, I love coming to Exeter, I really do. Why? Not because there was a parking survey, or not because of, no, because there were spaces like that, the bandstand, the Swayze, and this could be another gem, and I think it could be a real plus for shop owners downtown to say, you know, come on down in any season, and you want to take, you know, your cup of coffee and sit down by the river because the tide is coming in, and, you know. But, you know, those are my thoughts, that we value not only the people who come, the people who live here, but we value the green space, and the birds in the air, and trees, of course, and everything that can happen there. And also, we value that everybody should have an opportunity to walk through a very sweet space, whether you're able to walk, or you need somebody to push you in a wheelchair. So I urge that this is a win for everybody, and if we do it carefully and respectfully, we won't burden taxpayers by doing this, we will enhance our tax base by doing it.
Thank you. Thank you.
A short-sighted view of this economically is to say, oh, it's going to be removed from the tax rolls. Well, I wasn't born and bred in Exeter, but I've been here long enough to remember the fire 30 years ago that led to this being a vacant lot, producing not a heck of a lot for the value of the town. A short-sighted view is to say, oh, we won't be collecting taxes on a vacant lot if we turn this into a park, or if the town accepts it. On the other hand, a long-sighted economic view is, if we turn this into a park and get rid of this eyesore that we have been fighting with and trying to avoid in our heads as we walk past it for 30 years, it will improve the value of all the other properties in downtown Exeter, and will make Exeter a more vibrant place, and will increase the tax revenue from all the other properties in downtown Exeter. Look at what was done, for example, in Newburyport. Look at what is being done in Amesbury. Look at what was done years and years ago in Portsmouth. I can remember what Portsmouth used to be like. If we turn this, if we get rid of this eyesore, frankly, it will improve the property values in downtown, it will improve the tax revenue, and it will improve, most importantly, forget about the economics, our enjoyment of our downtown. How much, is there anybody in this room who enjoys that fence? I didn't hear any answers.
There's a hand raised.
One hand, one.
The owners, the current owner raised his hand.
I'll never forgive you if you don't accept his property.
Thank you.
Good morning, Scott Ruffner, 11 Hall Place. I guess the first point I want to make is just for me to put in context, I'm sitting here thinking about, it was 100-some-odd years ago, I believe, that Swayze Park in Ambrose Swayze gifted that Parkway, and I'm sure the same argument could have been made then, that, you know, looking ahead 100 years, imagine all of the riverfront condos that could be there, and what we as a town and taxpayers have missed out on, had we not accepted that gift. So I think, you know, that point can be made with any situation like this, but I agree with the other comments, that this is an opportunity that is very generous for these guys to make the offer, and I think there's a track record in town of many groups and organizations, committees and commissions that are willing to step up, do the work, find grants, volunteer time. I can tell you, I'm the Vice Chair of the Arts and Culture Commission, and we already received last year a $20,000 grant for the refurbishing of the sculpture in Founder's Park, and there's a lot of grants out there, there's a lot of support out there for these types of projects. We've been working on initiatives to increase public art in town, and one of the primary issues has been where, and a pocket park like this would be a perfect opportunity. And I think the support in the room shows that there's people here willing to lend support, to stay involved, and not let this be something that is voted on and then becomes a burden for the town, the town employees, or taxpayers. And I also agree with many of the comments that it's a plus for downtown businesses. In the business owners that I've spoken to, one of their biggest concerns is the burden of if more construction does happen on this lot, and the burden that's going to put on downtown businesses and the burden that's going to put on downtown businesses. And if that happens, I'm sure you guys will all be getting complaints about traffic and the negative impact on business. But in the end, I think this is a great opportunity, and I encourage you guys to accept the generous offer. Thanks.
Thank you. Melissa, do we see anybody?
We had two people, they have since stepped off.
Okay, we'll keep watching. Don't be shy.
Anna Grazer, Eight Warren Avenue. I'll just add to the, my support to the other comments that we've heard in support of the park acquisition. I think looking at lost tax revenue is not the right way to approach this. We're really comparing lost opportunities. It's not tax revenue we have in our pocket. And the tax revenue comes with other infrastructural costs with supporting another, another building in town. So I think the opportunities, particularly the value of having a park, the public health aspects, the community building opportunities, those public spaces are what really tie our community together. And we need these spaces in order to grow our community and enrich the community. I will also add that the downtown has very few windows to the river. And I think we need to continue to rehabilitate our waterfront. And it is a tremendous value. It's a tourist attraction, it's an environmental resource that we need to support. And creating a park that abuts the river is a priceless opportunity for us. Just can't compare that to the cost of supporting another commercial building. And I very much appreciate the generosity of this, this offer.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Still no one on Zoom, Melissa? Good morning.
Hi, Martha Walsh, 27 Chestnut Street. Everybody's already spoken so well, but I'm just one more voice to say, yes, I walk downtown Exeter every day, love the herons, love the eagles. Would love to have another spot to watch them from. And I agree, this is another way to welcome people into our town. And I thank this, these people for this wonderful generous offer. And I thank you for doing the due diligence. I can't believe you came up with all those numbers in just a week.
He didn't have a choice. Thank you.
Hi, Molly Ruffner, Levin Hall Place. I'm also in support of it and think it's incredibly generous on behalf of Nancy and Elliot. One thing I did want to point out was, I'm sure the numbers have probably increased since the 2020 estimate for construction, just based on after COVID, all the material costs, labor costs. So I'm sure, I don't know if you guys have gotten updated quotes, but I'm sure it would cost more than $2 million to build the building there. And the cost of rents there and everything else would have to be, you'd have people complaining that, you know, it's not affordable rent in downtown Exeter. So just want to say I'm in favor of everything that you've said so far. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No one else? All right. I will give one last opportunity. Once we close the public hearing and bring it back to the board, it's back to the board and we'll deliberate before we vote. So I just, I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity.
Okay, I'm just going to say so.
I keep looking at you. I figured if I looked at you long enough.
What'd you say?
I figured if I looked at you long enough.
Well, you kept looking, all right. Florence Ruffner, Five Pine Street. I'm very much in favor of this project, and thank you, Nancy and Elliot, for your generosity. And it will make our downtown more beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, going once.
I'm going to take a second turn, Sally Ward, 72 Park Street. I did want to add to my comments and to the comments that have already been made that this, I don't think we've done enough to embrace the riverfront in Exeter. And this is a gem of an opportunity to do that.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. I'd like to acknowledge, we know we have a hand up in Zoom. We've got one person at the podium, and I believe that's you, Mr. Clement. You can go next. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning, Dave Short, 1 Dewey Street. In the board's consideration of this, I just want to make sure that they're working with accurate data as far as construction costs go. One of the, one of the baseline data points was the slope of the land from the sidewalk to the river. I believe it was what you had received for a, an estimate was based upon a 12% slope, which is well above the 8% or so ADA limit. The actual slope is somewhere between 6% and 7%. So ADA compliance would be significantly easier. So I know that 365,000 figure weighs heavily on the board because that's a significant number. But when you change the data you're working with, it could dramatically affect what that cost would be. And it's not taking into account volunteer efforts, fundraising, grants, and all that sort of thing.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Okay, we have a hand up in Zoom. And we're going to ask your patients, our Zoom on the computer is not working as it should. So we've got the assistant town manager holding a microphone up. Can you hear us? Good morning. It looks like that microphone's moving. I don't know if that means he's talking.
That's our side.
Oh, that's our side.
I know, I don't know that I want to give it off the top. Do you have Dawn? I mean, if someone has Dawn, if that's Dawn, I'm trying to call, I don't know.
I can.
Sorry, I just. Not quite sure why.
I do. If it's.
Yeah, I think Julie's looking for it now. Right. And if it is, we have his email. I could read his email, too. I know, he's on his, he's on his phone already. We're assuming it's Dawn Clement. We're assuming it's Don Clement because we, well, it just says Donald's phone, so we're.
Oh, it's muted on the bottom, that's why.
Hey, Don, we can't hear you. Are you muted on your end?
He's muted. Do you want to put on speaker? You can hear, he can hear on your speaker.
His wife answered, so. Technology.
We got to write Donald at least.
Yes. Don, it's Julie. Are you calling in on the, okay, we can hear you. Our, our mic is on, but it sounds like you might be muted on your end. Arg. I can, I can put the phone up to the, my microphone if you want to shout. You won't have to shout, just put her on speaker. All right, that's what I'm going to do, Don. I'm just going to put you at my microphone and put it on speaker, okay? Don? And now we have Jen, too. Can you unmute?
I'm asking him to unmute, he's not muted.
Yeah, but. We're making him do two things with one phone.
It might be easiest if you just.
Yeah, Don? Can you, no, let Jen know we see her, too.
Her hand's not up.
Oh, it is up, is it?
No.
Don, can I put you on, on speaker?
Can you hang up?
I'm going to and redial. Please leave your message. That's, I only have his cell phone, I don't have his.
That's all I have, is a cell phone. Sir, Don dropped off.
Okay, yeah, I'm telling him to zoom in again. There it is. I had put her on speaker, too.
Do we have Jen's number?
I don't.
I don't.
Yeah, I just emailed her, so let's see.
Sure.
While we wait, please entertain us.
Am I going to mess anybody up if I do?
No, go ahead.
There's one additional comment I meant to make. Having read a lot of information that's been pouring in over the last couple of days before Christmas and this week, I was struck by the generosity and the pouring in of offers of help that makes me know that when we create something like this, we own it. You know, it's like, well, who's going to take care of that? Who's going to look after that tree or that park or their playground? Well, I helped do it, I donated this, I'm going to stop by and see if it's okay. And that's the kind of stuff that when we create a park or create a space, it doesn't, it doesn't stop with us. Where you walk with your grandchildren and say, your grandmother helped to make that park, you better be sure you take care of it. And it, and it builds, and it builds. And I think you're not just building a piece of property, you're not just building something, you're building a little bit of history. And it can continue with everybody who contributes. And the ideas for artwork and everything else are just fabulous. So take that into consideration, too. I think it's, it's got potential. You know, and it was saying it's an opportunity. And we're really blessed to have that opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, so I can let you know, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. I received an email from Jen Martel. She said she could hear us and she could hear Don. So, technical. But she also said if I wanted to call her. So do you want me to call her and let her?
If she'd like to speak, yeah, that'd be great.
No, but I know what his opinion is. I can, and he sent us an email, so we can read his email if he'd like.
Hi, this is Jen.
Hi, Jen, it's Nancy Belanger. I have you on speaker.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think there might be a delay because I still hear you talking on the Zoom.
Yeah, so we're going to try this, better this way than no way, okay?
Sounds good.
Just get her name and address.
Okay, so just state your name and address, and I'm going to put your microphone up to the microphone.
Okay, great. Hi, my name's Jen Martel. My address is 23 Woodridge Lane. I'm a member of the planning board and also a landscape architect professionally. And I just wanted to mention that I'm the one who prepared that $350,000 cost estimate for the park. And I just wanted to make sure that people aren't getting too hung up on that number. You know, that was just something I kind of threw together to, you know, based on really no information. Like, I haven't actually, like, walked on the site or I don't know what the slopes are. I could just kind of tell from photographs and everything like that. But you can see in that cost estimate what it includes. It does not include extensive ramps or anything like that, just a simple, some retaining wall upgrades, handrail, pathway to the water, and then just allowances for things like benches or trellis or public art or anything. Again, I think, you know, I agree with other people who have stated that a lot of that could be grant-funded or fundraised for in other ways. I would say that, you know, the important number is, I think it was like $18,000 to kind of just stabilize the site. I think that is important. You know, we can't just take down the fence. We have to actually fill the hole, make the site safe, even if we're going to put up a chain link fence. If there's an opportunity for people to get into the site, I know that there would need to be access to the Bill Cornicello property, probably. So I think it would be important to invest, at least initially, to stabilize the site while the town figures out what to do with it. And the only other thing I wanted to say is I really appreciate all of the enthusiasm today. And I hope that, you know, another kind of similar town-supported project back in, I think, I forget when it was built, maybe the 80s, was Planet Playground. And I know that that's due for a refresh. So I hope that there'll be the same amount of support for that when that comes to town meeting this spring.
Great, thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. See you tonight.
So we, we did confirm that that was Don Clement that was trying to get on. And I acknowledge that we had quite a few, the select board had quite a few emails, but personally can say that I took some phone calls of folks that phoned over the weekend. And I did speak with Don, and I'll summarize our conversation, that Don hoped that the select board considered the donation and the opportunity that it could bring, so. Anybody else? Hi, Bill.
Bill Campbell, now at Seven River Woods Drive. And I'd like to say I'll take care of the, I mean, I appreciate the comment about ADA, at least for a little while. I would like to support this project and all. I think it would be a wonderful gem in our great downtown. Very unique downtown for a town of our size in New Hampshire. And I think this would just only add to it. And as far as the financial end of it, we tend to work things out in my years here. When people put up big numbers, somehow we get around. We've done a lot of, I don't want to go through them all, but we've been, when I was a selectman, we went through some of these. And somehow you get the money and somehow you do the project. So we would do this and we would get a good park. Maybe not one year, maybe two or three years, but it will happen.
Great, thank you, Bill. Anybody else? Okay. Last chance. Seeing no other public comment, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion in the second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes 3-0, public hearing is closed. We'll bring it back to the board for deliberation. Selectwoman Gilman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see how to begin this. I want to say that we've had, I'm going to go along with people who know, we've had a short time to consider this. I appreciate the offer for the donation. I have received. I have received, you have shown much more support for this than those against, and I have to listen to you, and listen to the greater number. I just wanna give some more reality kind of numbers, because I did consider this, as the first gentleman said. There will be a cost to this, and it will be an ongoing cost, and so, you know, great gift, love it, but in my professional life as an architect, I don't consider this the highest, best use of the property. And I have to say again, I appreciate the love that you have for connecting to the river, and this is what the community wants to hear, and wants to do. Some of the other things that were discussed is the cost of development, and I'm doing, again, a guesstimate based on rough square footage and needs, and what we know, and part of, one of the things that was an estimate was that the change in level from the street to the river is eight feet. So for accessibility ramps, the slope can be no more than one inch for every foot. So that's 96 inches that we're going down, if we leave the lot the way it's sloped now. It's 96 feet, which doesn't include the five-foot platforms that we have to have every 13-foot of slope, every 13-foot of ramp. So that's a piece that needs to be engineered, and that's cost. Just for your information. The other option is to fill it so it's flat to street level. That again would have to be engineered with a retaining wall, and whatever the impact is on the properties on the other side. So those are the things, oh, one thing that was not mentioned at the last meeting, when we were talking about the removal of the granite foundation that's there, and that maybe there's contractors out there that would take it, nobody said anything about reusing it in the park. So that, you know, there's, maybe that's some lesser cost to what we need to do. So those are the things that I was thinking, then there's the tax revenue, et cetera, et cetera. But listening to the largest body and the cross-pollinization of the different groups that are interested and want, encouraging, and I wanna use an even stronger word than encouraging, but would like to see us accept this donation, that would be the way I have to go.
Thank you.
Just wanted to recognize that it's not free forever, and we can have volunteers now, but will we have them forever? So, there's a continuing cost.
Thank you. Selectwoman Belanger?
Okay, so I'm gonna try to hit my points here, so you don't have to come back to me again. First, yes, this was a rushed process. Thank you for donating or offering this donation, and thank you for coming to all of the meetings, this must have been excruciating for the people who were trying to do a good turn, or offering to do a good turn for our town. I would also add that our Vice Chair isn't here, Molly Cowan, but she did bring up an important issue about the tax base, we have to rec, and so didn't you, sir? We have to recognize that, we have to take everything into consideration. It's part of our due diligence, and it's important. I did wanna ask you about the deed, I wanna make sure we're all set with the deed. Any questions on the previous easements? Those would be all gone, correct?
Those would be gone, and we would not have any issues.
All right, thank you. One of the things that I will say, I am fine with accepting this property, but I can't commit to the future, I'm fine with it being a park, but there are some, were some things in the emails, and that have been brought up in our meetings. I'm fine with putting the fence up for now, we still have some due diligence to do, I feel. So, I don't wanna say, yes, we could open it to, you know, a boat launch, or anything like that. I'm fine with accepting it as a park. And I do appreciate all the offers, especially Jen Martel, who volunteers a lot on the planning board, has been on for quite some time. I understand that in the future, this would either have to be, depending on the vetting process, it would either have to be a CIP item, and we take into consideration grants, and any volunteer offers. And that I also think we need to, if we accept, decide to accept this today, we need to look at any impact, immediate impact on the parks and rec with our current budget process, to make sure that they're not absorbing something that they, you know, our vetting process on our budget is pretty tight, so I just wanna make sure we we're in the middle of that, that we keep that in the back of our minds when we do our public hearing and things. And, and one final thought was that our town planner, Mr. Sharples, had been working on parks and putting benches around the town, so I think this kind of goes in with that too. So, I believe those are all my points, and thank you to everyone for all the emails, and for showing up this morning.
Thank you. So I'd like to first acknowledge Elliot and Nancy with this very generous donation. I'd like to acknowledge, as I said before, all of the boards and commissions that came together on short notice. Town staff that did their due diligence at the request of the Select Board. The Select Board members, many of whom, you know, juggled their schedules between work and vacation time over the holidays to make sure that we had three public hearings before the end of the month. It would have been nice to have had Selectwoman Cowan here, but that wasn't possible with her plans, it's always good to have as many members of the board. And I agree, I concur, the outpouring of support has been amazing from people of all different cohorts. Obviously, this is an opportunity. This is a great opportunity. And the towns had opportunities like this before, that they've taken advantage of, and then, you know, dealt with it accordingly, given time. I agree with Selectwoman Belanger, this, if we accept this, would become a capital improvement project. I acknowledge folks wanna fundraise, and I encourage that. Staff will seek out grants, and I encourage that. Folks will offer to give their time and their efforts and their resources, and their professional know-how, and I encourage that. I would say though, and I know, and I think it's fabulous that Planet Playground was built by volunteers, this is a little bit different than a playground. I think it's gonna be, it's gonna take a little bit more extensive know-how than building a playground. And Mr. Dean, I'm sure Primex, our insurer, has changed their policies a little bit since the 90s in terms of what they would cover for liability reasons, so we're gonna look into all of that. But this is a great opportunity that doesn't come every day. And it's a very generous offer from friends and neighbors of ours that live in Exeter, that have other properties in Exeter, and have really been stewards of the downtown. And I think that we talk about taxes and revenue, and we're elected here to look after, we're given the responsibility by the voters to look at everything, to look at lost revenue, increased revenue taxes and all that. But we ask of the residents to show up every March, and sometimes, like this year, we ask them to show up in August for a special meeting, because we live in an old town and things happen, like siphons and so forth. And we are so fortunate that our voters always step up and do the right thing for their town. And not everything is about taxes and revenue, and siphons, public safety complexes, water and sewer. All of those things are so important. My colleague on the board, Mr. Shartran, always refers to water and sewer as a miracle. And it is, and it's necessary. And you show up and you vote for the things that we need, and do we need another park? We don't need another park. Do we need another building? Maybe not. But I think it's okay to listen to our voters that say, you know what? We would really like this, and this is doable. And all we have to do is accept a very generous donation, and as my friend, Mr. Campbell, said, we'll work out the rest. Now, I'll caution you, it may not be in two months, could be two years, it could be five years, but we can work out the rest. Between town staff, between all of you, the boards and committees. So, I think, I agree there, did you have a?
I did forget something, it never fails, sorry. The deed, if this is accepted and voted on today by the three of us, the deed has to be filed this afternoon, or first thing tomorrow morning.
We are planning on doing that tomorrow.
First thing in the morning.
First thing.
Thank you.
And everything's open, everyone's gonna be there? Everything we need is?
We've made plans offline with legal counsel, and those plans are in process.
Okay.
Any other thoughts?
No, this just reminds me of our Budget Recommendation Committee that always says the wants and the needs, and but sometimes, wants and needs, needs are important, but sometimes wants have to be factored in, and they're important too, so.
Any other thoughts, Selectwoman Gilman?
No, I think it's all been covered.
Then I would entertain a motion that the Select Board accept the proposed donation of 23 Water Street, map 72, lot 39, from Pear Point LLC, owners Elliot Berkowitz and Nancy Phillips, and that the Select Board further approve this property to be used in the future as a park, and that the Select Board approves that the Pear Point name is used as the name of the park, as requested by the donors, that the Select Board further authorize the town manager to work with the town planner, and other various town staff, to develop a formal plan for 23 Water Street, for that plan to be placed as a capital improvement project in line behind the other existing projects, and authorizing the town manager to move forward with developing a formal plan, and also for the Board, Select Board, to consider all other fundraising donations, donations of time, and that lastly, once a formal plan is developed, the Select Board will consider organizing an ad hoc committee of staff and citizens of Exeter appointed by the Select Board to finalize the formal plan of developing the park.
So moved.
I will second, but I will ask you for one, excuse me, one amendment to it. You used the word "future," and the document says "perpetuity," so I would ask you to amend your motion.
So I would entertain amending the motion to replace the word "future" with "perpetuity"?
So moved.
And I'll amend my second.
This is an amended motion, amended second, any other further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 3-0, thank you very much.
Thank you, again, to everyone coming out this week. Much appreciated.
I have one request before everybody leaves and enjoys this rainy day, I would like to see everybody here at deliberative session.
Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16, and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.